Okay, Derek's here. We'll call it to order this August the 31st, 2016.
Just call him out.
Franklin County Commission meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Waymire?
Here.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Here.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Hey, if you will all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, then please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Kim Wilcox.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the changing seasons and the way that you provide. And Father, even as they go through this meeting today, Father, we just ask for discernment. We ask for your guidance and direction. And Father, we just give you praise for the way you lead and guide and direct each one of us. Father, we thank you for the health of each one of these men today as they've come in to be a part of this meeting. And we just ask that you would continue to provide and protect them as they lead and guide the county throughout this way. Father, we just give you praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business.
John?
Commissioners, as you know, though, we had a major event over the weekend affecting the city of Ottawa fire, or excuse me, water supply. And I'm going to ask Alan to come up and give you a briefing on that of just some different things that happened. Stand now.
Morning. Chair Howard, I think you're aware that we did a declaration of disaster late Saturday night. As of yesterday morning, the water supply was tested and KDHE has rescinded the boil order. Just so you know, one of the main reasons we did a declaration of disaster was not only to assist the city of Ottawa with any of their needs, but also this affected the city of Princeton, rural water districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, which is about 60 percent of the population in our county. Throughout Sunday and Monday, we assisted Ottawa University with sheltering 180 of their students because they had a plumbing issue in Brown Hall, and they're continuing to work on that. We also assisted the city with securing water so that they could hand out gallon jugs of water to the citizens that needed that. We used 10,000 gallons, one gallon jugs of water, which is two semi-loads of water that thankfully Walmart DC sets in our county, and it was real easy for us to make a couple phone calls and have the water delivered to us here in Ottawa. So, we still have the declaration. As you know, it lasts for seven days. That'll be good through Saturday. We don't need to do any action or anything at this time. It will just expire at the end of the week. Do you have any questions for me?
What are the restaurants doing for us?
The Department of Agriculture is where the restaurants get their licensing. They were notified on Sunday and worked with all of the restaurants. Saturday night, all of the restaurants were notified by City of Ottawa that we had the boil order. That's why nobody could get a drink at Sonic or any of the convenience stores for the Sunday and Monday, Tuesday morning. So, Department Agriculture also worked with them. The water's now safe in Ottawa, and the restaurants are open, and everything's good to go. We also, IPAWZ, which is an alerting system that we talked, I believe we talked to you about a few months ago that we were working on. Two weeks ago, we were approved to use, from FEMA, to use the IPAWZ notification. And when we do that, you don't have to sign up for anything. If you have a cellphone that is within the, bought within the last couple of years, it has that ability on it. We did an alert for the whole county, which also cut in on cable TV, cut in on the radio stations, and I understand it even cut in on some of the Kansas City stations to alerting our citizens of the emergency boil order. So, with that being the first time that we used it, I believe it was well worth us going through the process to have that available to us.
It worked fine on my phone. I got the message to start with before I got the call.
Yeah, me too. Anything else?
Think so.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else, John?
Sure.
Hey, no one sign up public comment? Hey, takes the consent agenda. Today, we do have several items on the consent agenda. Need considered and approved. The first item will be consider and approve the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for July the 27th, 2016, and the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for August the 24th, 2016. Also to consider and approve tax change orders in the amount of a positive $342.28. Consider and approve minutes for the primary election canvas on August the 8th, 2016. And also consider and approve payroll for the pay period of July the 24th, excuse me, July the 21st, 2016 through August the 20th, 2016, in the amount of $1,106,738.57. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion and second, Jen.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, it takes us to our first item of business will be discussion of the federal site review of Title X program. Mitch?
Good morning.
Morning.
Sorry, I didn't have this for you earlier. This is just a summary of the Title X site visit that we had last week. In the late July, the state contacted us, it's been a long week, contacted us concerning the federal review of the state program, asking us to be a participant in site visits. So, we were selected along with Reno County to have the federal site reviewers visit us. So, they told me that it was because we have such a good program and that we probably should be privileged to have them. Well, we are, but it was a federal site review, so as you can imagine with federal regs, it's a little, you want to make sure everything's up and up to snuff. So, they did visit us on Wednesday, the 24th, and because we didn't have a family planning clinic on that day with scheduled appointments, the clinical site reviewer returned on Thursday morning for some visits with our APRN and to accompany her, excuse me, to some of the clinical appointments and review how that was being performed. So, they did review all our policies, our fiscal policies, looked at how our EHR and our billing system work, making sure that we're following all the federal guidelines for this program, that we have the appropriate notices posted, such as, you know, anyone can take the family planning program regardless of ability to pay, those types of notices. They look at our workforce development. Are we doing the training that's required for the program, such as our staff has to do? Child abuse reporting training is a requirement. Human trafficking is a requirement. So, a lot of the training that's required for that. There's been a bigger push in recent years for quality improvement and performance management systems to make sure that we're looking at what we're doing on a consistent basis. If there's a problem, that we're trying ways to improve that or something, maybe it's not even a problem, maybe it's just something we can do better to serve the community and our population. So, that receives attention from the site review. So, it was very intense, but, and a long couple of days and a long three weeks preparing for it. At the outcome of the site visit, they were very complimentary to the staff, and I want to state publicly how appreciative I am of the staff that we have currently at the Health Department. They are just outstanding. And they commented, and it was true of Reno as well, that our staff is doing everything right. In other words, they're following the guidelines, they're approaching clients in the right manner, we're aware of cultural issues, those types of things. So, they were very, very complimentary. Any of the issues that were discussed and that came up, and we don't have the final review yet, we'll see what they say, but were really pretty technical issues. You know, a policy that maybe they would like rephrased, you know, or a statement that was not in the, in one of the documents that they would like added, so that type of thing. But they made it quite evident that the review wasn't an audit of us, it was a visit to audit the state. And the state has had turnover in the program, so there's things the state now is looking at to help us in the future years as it, across the state, actually, all the family planning programs. So, such things as providing sample policies and protocols that we can adapt that fit better with the guidelines from the federal government, so that type of thing. A couple of things that were brought up that we may want to discuss in the future, and I think I've mentioned this to John, is really the structure and the authorization of policies and protocols based on how the county government works. That's one thing. We develop those internally, we have them reviewed, so, but we redo that internally. As a commission, you sign the grant, and what was brought up was that, you know, as signing the grant, you as a commission are saying that you will do follow all these guidelines, but you're not reviewing the internal policies. So, we may want to be looking at the structure that we have on these policies. A second thing that was brought up was really our accounting systems, which I think the enterprise system is being looked at, may take care of some of those issues. And there weren't any real issues, I mean, he, there weren't any, what do I want to say, financial errors. It's not that. It was just the way that we have to track the grants internally in our department rather than in the overall system, if that makes sense. So, there were some, so those are kind of high-level issues that, from a federal perspective, may need to be considered, so, and among other things. But I did just want to mention, I mean, we put a lot of time and effort into the site visit. We really learned a lot from our site reviewers, they're experts in the field. We made a few tweaks already to better meet those regulations, and just wanted to share that information. We'll, I'll probably be back at some point talking more specifically about some of those issues, so.
Even though they were here to review the interaction with the state, if they had a finding of fact, would we be obligated? Because I know in the, in the business world, if you, you can do a voluntary, ask OSHA to come in to do an inspection, you know, on a voluntary basis, and you're, you're asking them to come, and then even though it's a voluntary thing, if they have a finding of fact, then you have an obligation to correct that. Does that same thing work for this?
Oh, sure, because we signed that contract that says we will follow those Title X guidelines. And so, yes. And that, and hence, we did add, well, for example, one of the guidelines is that is providing language translation services. And one thing we didn't have in the office, we really haven't had, but one instance, I can think of where we couldn't, we had someone who spoke a language that was quite different than anything we ever see. But we have to have a sign with translated languages saying to people that walk in that we can provide that service. So, I printed off that sign, and it didn't print right, so I got to still go back and do that. But that's an example of, yes, we were obligated to correct that issue right there, so. And we will be in the future obligated to correct some issues, so.
It's great you're able to learn as well as get a glowing review, so.
Yeah, it was really, and, and as the regional officer said, you know, they, they only visit the state and audit the state every three years during the project period, every, once every three years, and they pick two to three sites out of, out of that audit. He said, "We'll never see you again, so take advantage of it," and which we did. And really anxious to put all the things that help improve our service into play, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
See, otherwise, we would end up paying to have somebody come in and review our stuff. That's what we could have done free. Not much from the federal government to get free. Hey, next item of business, be consider holding a public hearing to vacate Neosho Road from the east right-of-way line of Tennessee East.
Good morning, Commissioners. The department received a request from two of three property owners concerning the vacation of Neosho from the east line of Tennessee Road East. The department has received the three green guards back, and the notice was published in last Saturday's paper. It is appropriate for you to open a public hearing, sir.
We need a motion to open that, Derek, right? Okay. Look for a motion to open the public hearing to vacate Neosho Road from the east right-of-way line of Tennessee East. Have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, Jen.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone to speak on this?
Don't sign up to just come up?
Do we have anyone that wants to speak on this?
Yes.
If you could come up to the mic and state your name and your address.
Yeah, I'm Trent Hillman. I live on 3928 Neosho Road, and I am wanting to vacate this road because this road, there was a hearing on this back in November of 2000, that this road has been closed. So, the road is no longer a through road. And back in the last week of March to the first week of April of 2016, I don't know if somebody in this room authorized it, but somebody came in and started cutting down trees and, on this closed part of the road, laying them down on my fence. And I was in the process of getting livestock, and now I can't do that because, for whatever reason, somebody has come in and started cutting down trees. So, without any kind of hearing on the matter, so what's to stop somebody from coming in and cutting down my whole hedge row? So, right now, my livelihood is in limbo.
Are these trees that were cut down on Neosho or on a property line, fence, row, or both?
Both, on my property line, right up against my fence, to the middle of the road where this road has been closed since November 17th of 2000. So, there's trees that have grown up on this road because it's not a through road. So, what's happened is somebody authorized, somebody, or he just took it upon himself to come in and cut these trees down.
Does, does it road currently, you say it's a closed road, but is it gravel past your dr-
No. The gravel stops at Madeline Madden's.
Or driveway or?
House. That's where it stops. And then, from there all the way down, there's a, there's a bridge that was in need of repair back in, I believe it was May of 2000, that they decided that they were going to have a hearing on this, and they didn't want to spend the money to make it a through road, so the road has been closed. And I have paperwork here on that. I came in back then, and they took a vote back then to close that road on past.
Haven't seen the pictures. Were they cutting trees on the vacated portion of the road?
Yes.
So, when a road's vacated, that easement goes back to the property owners. They wouldn't need any permission from us to cut on those. We're not-
So, a private citizen can come in and cut my trees down, is what you're saying?
And it doesn't have anything to do with us. That property reverts back to you.
Okay.
We don't have any claims to it anymore.
Right, and that, that's what we're here for today, to go from that point all the way up to Tennessee and make it all vacated.
Okay, but I'm just not sure how this has anything to do with vacating the rest of the road, like, this is a, this is a claim between you and whoever cut down your tree. I'd-
Right. So, yeah, but we're here to vacate the rest of that road up to Tennessee.
I understand.
And I guess I would ask the board to focus on that, and what you are looking at is entirely irrelevant to what we're here today to discuss. That is a potential claim between, between two private landowners that I would ask that you guys not involve yourself.
Because it's on a prior, prior vacated road, which is private property.
Can you, can you state your name and address?
Road single, 3928 Neosho Road. One of my concerns is that our road isn't maintained anyways. It hasn't been maintained, it hasn't been in nine years, it's never been maintained. We got gravel one time. He takes his tractor and grades it, and last week, two weeks ago, it was probably you guys came down and cut probably this much of the, the grown area in our road. Our road is overgrown, there's enough road, I mean, the gravel just from our tires and the Madden's trucks that go down there, it's never been maintained, nobody comes down. So, our concern is just to close it up, and we can maintain it ourselves, and, you know, save you guys some money. Not that anybody comes and takes care of it but us, so we just want it closed and, you know, we will take care of it ourselves, like we have been, you know, so. And, you know, it's about it.
The property you're wanting to vacate up to Tennessee, do you own property along that also? All the way up to where you want to vacate? I guess I need a little bit of a clarification from Jim or Larry or someone on the difference between a closed road and a vacated road, or what does it mean when they close a road?
The action that was taken in early 2000 was to vacate the center portion of the road on both sides of the creek.
And so, there are portions of the road that weren't-
There are portions of the road that are open to the east of that vacation, and there are portions, this portion of the road from Tennessee East down to where the vacation begins that is still an open road.
Okay, and on the west?
We were also furnished a copy of a letter from Mr. Finch on behalf of the third property owner opposing the vacation of this portion of the road.
And I would presume that, and Blaine's here today, that he intends on speaking, so we'll, we'll let him speak for his client.
And, and the portion of the road on the east side of the bridge that's gone, is that a vacated road? Is that a-
No, that's an open minimum maintenance road.
Right, but it's minimum maintenance?
Yes, sir.
The one on the west side is designated what?
I believe it's designated minimum maintenance also.
And so, a minimum maintenance road means the county doesn't maintain it, basically?
Very often.
Yeah, okay, minimum. Okay, yeah. Okay. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on this?
I'm Milton Madden. 3959 Neosho Road is my mom's address, so, but it's going to be my place someday, and we're across from Trent, so, like they said, no one ever comes down, and we just assume make it a private drive, so, I mean, I don't know what else to say. But I don't oppose it, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much for holding this public hearing. The letter that I sent to your staff on Monday indicates that we are representing Mr. Bo Killo, who is the record owner of the property at 4024 Neosho Road. I don't know if you've been supplied a map of this area or not, but it might help to imagine that Mr. Killo's property is shaped like a capital letter T, and the crossbar of that T runs right underneath, just to the south of Neosho Road. And so, he has one crossbar of that T that goes out on this section of the road, which is east or west of the creek, and one that goes out on the east side of the creek. The closure of this road would essentially landlock one of the crossbars of that capital letter T. There's a creek running north and south, right there along the main body of what would be the letter T, and that crossbar would essentially be landlocked at that point. There would be no public road by which he could access that parcel, whether for timber, whether for farming, whether for livestock, and essentially would be at the mercy of whether or not his neighbors would let him access his property through there. That creates a whole host of potential property issues and disputes that I don't think the county commission intends to create, and I certainly have sympathy for the, the adjoining landowners who say that they, they don't feel they've gotten enough maintenance of their road, but that really is a separate issue from vacating this portion of the road. It, it really is a fundamental question of whether or not a neighbor can reduce the value of another neighbor's property by cutting off access, and that's what the request is, to cut off access to part of Mr. Killo's property. As I said, it will leave it landlocked, it will leave the only access to the property down another minimum maintenance road. Mr. Killo has partnered with the county to make sure that road is adequate for ingress and egress on the other crossbar of that capital letter T, but this one still remains a minimum maintenance road and, and has not been as improved as the other side. However, it is essential. Without it, part of this property is essentially worthless, the overall value of the tract is reduced, and we will essentially have two of three neighbors dictating to the third neighbor what the value of his property should be. I know that this commission has had a strong, taken a strong stand on numerous occasions for rights of landowners to be able to dictate the use and value of their property and to not have adjoining landowners be able to reduce that value, and that is exactly what would be happening in this case. Finally, I'll ask you to consider the, the last point I made in my letter, and that's really a balancing of the equities, if you will, and we asked the question, what does the least harm? If you close that road, there is a certain detriment to Mr. Killo. He will lose value to his property, he will be landlocked, you may end up sparking legal action in the district court to try to determine rights of access. If you don't vacate this portion of the road, what will happen is it will continue as it has now. Very little access, primarily used by all three of the landowners there. The county will not have a large maintenance bill because it is minimum maintenance. However, all neighbors will have full access to their property, all neighbors will be able to make improvements to the road if they need to, or to seek out county approval to add more rock to the road when necessary. So, denying this vacation leaves everyone in a better position. Approving it almost certainly leaves at least one landowner in a worse position and possibly multiple landowners if, if court action is needed to sort out their rights. So, we are asking today that you would close the public hearing, that you would deny the request to vacate this land. It would be extraordinary, in my experience with the county, that we have a situation where there is multiple landowners along the road, and one of them wants to keep the road open, and the county goes ahead and closes it. Every time I've seen a vacation, in my experience with the county, all of the landowners were in agreement that the road was no longer useful or had value and wanted to close it. So, this would be unique, I think, in terms of my experience, and you all may have seen other cases since, but we typically try to respect all the landowners along the route and make sure that all of them continue to have access, and that's done through making sure that there's a unanimous opinion for closure, and we simply don't have that here. As nice as the neighbors are, and I think they're all good, hardworking people, the reality is they would be reducing the value of Mr. Killo's property and telling him essentially what he could and couldn't do with it, and that's really not what Franklin County is all about. I'll stand for any questions if you have any of me.
If I understand it correctly, this road has grown up with trees and stuff, which would tell me that Mr. Killo has not used that road in the last 16 years.
The center section has grown up with trees, the vacated portion. Of course, as you know, when a road is vacated, the landowner reassumes rights back to the center line. The road back to the west, back to Tennessee, I can't speak to the condition, but I know there has been some clearage of rights of way alongside the road to make sure that there is full access there. So, he has taken action to evidence his intention to, to maintain the access to that portion of the road, and I believe he's here today and can speak to whether he has accessed that property. There's really no other way to access it except along that road, and he's nodding his head yes, and so-
They're saying that he has accessed-
He has accessed the, the portion of his property down that road.
Okay, and, and the road then, if the west side is closed- Okay, and, and the road then, if the west side is closed, what keeps him from having access on the east and south side or whatever is the terrain of the property?
That's correct. That's correct. If I can, can I go to this map and show you? Technology has befuddled me again. So, this is, this is north.
Yes.
On the map, and here is the, you see it's still marked out for the road right of way for what exists, this is the vacated portion, it's just a straight line right here. This is Mr. Killo's property, this is the Maddens' property, and the Hillmans are directly up there, I just don't have them long enough. There we go. Hey, how'd you do that? If my daughter were here, she's sixteen, she would think that was absolutely normal, that, that I wouldn't be able to do it. So, here is the, here's the Hillman's property, Madden's property, Killo's property. This is the request to vacate this portion of Neosho Road down here, and if you can slide back down for me, you can see this is the, the creek that runs down through the Killo property, this is that crossbar of the letter T, in this case it's laying like this, and if you vacate this road, there will then be no access to this property via any public road, because it cannot be accessed back across the creek by vehicles without a significant amount of work. Mr. Killo has looked at the engineering necessary to do that, and it would be cost prohibitive versus just keeping the public road open that currently provides service to his property.
So, you, so, the creek is, you're telling me that creek blocks him from being back there? I understand that there's cattle back there that we feed all the time, we see the trucks back there all the time. I know there's four entrances to his property, because I've been supplying the permission of that property, and it's crazy because his gates that are up to get into that property.
You have Marshall Road, you have Texas Road, you have Neosho Road.
Neosho, Neosho, he's been there, I've seen him back there with his cattle. Like I said that?
Commissioners, do you have any other questions of me at this time?
Is that, does that map go up further, so we can see further east on that map, or is that the other direction, I'm sorry? No, that's where it ends at. So that is about the middle of the section where the?
You pull it, oop, that made a mess, you can pull it up on your top.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to make sure how far that is over there.
Anybody else have a question?
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate your time this morning.
Can I speak again?
Go ahead.
I would, Ken mentioning about respect and concern to the neighbors and, you know, being, letting us know, nobody told us that he was back there mining and, you know, I was out there one Sunday and the ground shook. Did anybody notify us that he was lowering our property? I mean, you know, if we want to sell our property, you know, we have to let him know now that we have a rock quarterback there, that we were never notified that was going to be reopened, and, like I said, that road is, he can get in that place, I have pictures to show where his gates are on there, so I just wanted you to know that, that they have no consideration for us too, because what they're doing back there, we were never notified about. So, he is lowering our property just by what he's done that we were never notified about, and that's, you know, I'm sorry, but this is, you know, our last resort, and I think I have a right to protect our property and the man's property by something that he's allowed to do, so, and I know that, like I said, them gates, he has property to, to get in there, because I've been back there, there's been trucks back there, there's been cattle back there, so, you know, I don't believe that is, very true.
The question mainly is on this road that we're looking at, whether or not to vacate, whether he has access from another road, is kind of immaterial in my opinion, because we're talking about mainly landowners on a road that's being requested to vacate, so, you know, each landowner has the right on that road, so that's kind of what we're looking at, whether or not to vacate it or not, so.
So, could we vacate from our end of our property to the Maddens?
You can, you say, you're asking, can we, will we?
Because our properties are like this. This is the Killos', this is the Maddens', and this is ours. We vacate from our property line down west on Tennessee, I mean, on Neosho to Tennessee.
I guess, now you're saying, is the true reason you want this road vacated because you don't want the effects of a quarry, to live next to a quarry essentially?
Correct, because it's, nobody?
That's not the purpose of our meeting, and we're here to decide whether or not that road gives access, useful access to a landowner. The permitting, the fact it is a quarry, that was all long decided, and we don't want to be dragged into that.
And that's exactly right. Commissioner Waymire, we've heard a lot of complaints here this morning that are of a civil nature, and there is a remedy for those complaints, but that remedy is not the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners. I would urge you to stay out of any complaints pertaining to that quarry, because that doesn't involve us. They have a valid special use permit to do that, it's my understanding, in fact, it's, I know for a fact that there is a separate grievance going on regarding that quarry that doesn't currently involve the board. We're here today to decide whether or not this road should be vacated, and speaking with Larry, the county has never vacated a road when they have received an objection from a landowner. And that's because, in doing so, you would be favoring one landowner over another, and that is a very, very dangerous precedent to set and dangerous policy for this board. So I would urge you, the only reason being you have received an objection from a, a landowner whose land adjoins the road, that we not vacate today, because if you're gonna preference one landowner in this situation, be ready for the flood of complaints coming down the pipe and asking you to do it in other situations, and that's not a position, in my opinion, that this board wants to be in, because frankly, I don't want to have to defend the ensuing legal action from the aggrieved landowners, so.
And that's exactly right, and the time that I've been on the board and looking at previous precedent, is that the only time that a road has ever been vacated is that when all the adjoining property owners were in agreeance and there was never an objection to it.
And I, and I don't disagree with any of that, the only, only thing I was trying to find out is, whether or not, the landlocking is not really, in my opinion, a landlock, because he does have access to another road out. It may not be the most convenient, may not be the most financially suitable, and he may have a legitimate reason to keep it open, I'm not just saying that, but I'm, I'd still want to say that, does that land technically not be had landlocked, because it does have access, and that's all I was asking about.
I mean, I, we, you're more than welcome to go out there and look at it, I mean, that, you, you see a top roof, but, I mean, if you go out there, it's not passable, it's not, I mean, our road's not maintained, you know.
Thank you.
Blaine?
Thank you, just, just briefly to address Commissioner Renault's point about the landlocking, the, the, and if I spoke in error, I apologize. The point was not to say that the entire tract would be landlocked, merely that portion that I highlighted where the creek runs across there, there is no other road that accesses that portion of the property, and, and to ask a landlord to have to ford the creek to get over there, I think would effectively landlock it, and, and it could never be divided off or parceled off or?
But it's one parcel of land.
It's one part of this tract, it's all one contiguous tract, but it is one part of it.
Exactly right, and whether I have a hedge row through it or whatever else I have, I have something in my terrain, but it's still one tract of property. That's what I'm looking at, is that, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, where I was coming from also, my time on the commission, we have never closed a road, vacated a road, when one of the property owners was against, it was, only ones we have done was when all property owners were for that, and to me, the landlocking or not is really kind of immaterial, it's a property owner that's up to that road and they're not for closing that road. So, we're back into the situation where, like you said, we have a landowner that does not want to close the road, and my time here, I've not seen, we've not done it since, so.
And, and I don't want this to sound crass, but the reasons for or against it, in my mind, are just immaterial. I, I mean, it's, you just have a landowner, a private landowner with private rights, asking that it not be vacated, and I think if you, as a governing body, delve into that and start trying to legislate that, you're, you're just asking for legal action, and, and as your counselor, I, I urge you not to do that.
Do we need a motion to close the hearing?
When the public hearing is ready to be closed.
I was about to say, if there's no one else to speak?
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this?
I make a motion, Chair, that we close the hearing.
I have a motion in a second to close the hearing.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renault?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, with that, would look for a motion, do we get a motion either way, to close or not to close, or just want to go with what's on us to close?
Well, I would think the motion would be made to vacate the road if it was the wish of the governing body, and if a motion isn't made, then the road will remain open.
Okay, with this, would look for a motion to vacate Neosho Road from the east right-of-way line of Tennessee east. Do I have a motion to vacate that road?
Mr. Chairman, this issue's come up several times since I've been on the board, and just like Derek said, as long as any property owner is objecting to closing the road, I make a motion not to close the road.
Okay, we have a motion to not vacate Neosho Road from east right-of-way line of Tennessee east.
And, and, you don't have to second that motion, again, I, I, given the way this was presented as a request to vacate the road, I think the, the proper course for the board is to just not make any motion, and if there is not a motion to vacate the road, then?
Then it dies.
Then it dies, so.
Okay. Mr. Dunn, you want to withdraw that motion?
I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay, we have on the floor a motion to vacate. All right, we do not have a motion, is there anyone that wants to make a motion to vacate? No motion made, that dies. Okay, it'll take us to item number three. Review of requests for proposals for organizational assessment of Franklin County operations. John?
Commissioners, you have in front of you a request for proposal for organizational assessment of Franklin County operations departments and offices, and what this is is basically a study request. This is something that we have budgeted for in the 2016 budget. A little bit of background, as the general, general overview, is that in 2014, as part of the compensation pay, pay study that was done in 2014, a RFP for that project was put out, and an alternate proposal for workflow analysis efficiency study was also considered, but ultimately not approved to be completed by the county commissioners. This is something that we've talked about in our budgeting sessions during the 2016 budgeting session, to consider doing this study, organizational study and workflow analysis. That being said, I would take any discussions that you, or any questions that you may have. Process now would, if this is approved, move forward with it would be to advertise this, we would be sending this RFP to vendors around the area, around in Kansas, there's a number of organizations both within the state of Kansas and also within the Kansas City metro that would be able to provide this service to us. We would put together a committee to take a look at this, to take a look at the proposals that come forward, and then make a recommendation to you from that. You saw you the scoring matrix that I put together for that, for you to take a look at, that's what we would be working off of and to make that recommendation. At that time, the board is under no obligation, as very clearly spelled out in the RFP, to accept the recommendation or to move forward with it, this would just be getting the proposals together and then taking a look at those.
Who all would be on the committee?
I would want to, probably four, I would want to get a mixture of both elected offices and appointed department heads to take a look at it. Things like this, I always view it as it's better, Derek, I would imagine, I'd rope him into this, and to, but I always think it's better to get a few more eyes than just mine on it, and to have some discussions. We would be having a, whoever's selected that we would like to take a look at, we would do much the same, ask them in, ask questions of them, go through all the legwork for the commissioners so that it's very clear, and then have them come in, do a presentation, and you would be able to ask them questions.
What was, again, explain again, the, so there's people in the state that can do this for you and so forth?
Yep.
What are we talking there? For, what are we talking for money wise there?
We have budgeted forty-five thousand dollars for this.
Maybe the lack of conversation is because we have kind of discussed, at least during budget time, whether or not this is something we want to pursue and the values of it, so, we're not committing to anyone or to do anything right here, so I guess we're just consenting to learn a little more about it, so.
Well, obviously, when we talked about moving nine-one-one center, that was a big step, and, obviously, perhaps a study from somewhere would help in that.
Not at that, not with the nine-one-one, we are moving forward on that and working on that. Essentially, what is happening is, is that some of the concerns that I've expressed in the past is that we have levels of staffing in certain departments that are such that unless a person is on the ground and in that department, or looking through that department and asking a lot of questions about it, we are largely dependent on either an elected office or a department head to tell us what they need, and that can be problematic. It has been my experience of ten years of working in municipal management, that sometimes department heads look at it that the only way to solve a problem or address an issue within their department is to add more staff or to add more money. And from that standpoint, to get an independent contractor and consultant whose job and specialty is looking at things like this, to come in and make a determination of appropriate staffing levels, if there's duplication of efforts, and all the other things that I've listed out in the RFP, is what you, as a commission, need to make a, a informed decision on appropriate staffing levels, and also levels of supervision, luber, levels, the amount of management staff in departments, there's several things here that I'm wanting to look at, and I think it's overall to get to organizational efficiency and also cost-cutting measures.
And that's what happens with an organizational assessment, because that's what I've done and that's what I do, is that you're looking, and it can get to the staffing, people usually look to the staffing initially, and yes, it can get to there, but you're looking at, if you're really drilling down, you're getting to the PDs, the, the descriptions, the job descriptions, seeing if those match up with what folks are doing for duplications, and, and at the processes within the organization, to see if there are process flow maps, to see if there can be efficiencies there, then you overlay that with the others to see if there's duplication of services. Another important piece of it, which I hope is looked at too, is what I always called the culture and environmental piece, you're looking at how the communications are within department and across departments, see if they're operating within silos, or if they're really being communicative with other departments, it takes a holistic view of what's going on the organization, then you get the final output of the report of the potential process improvements, the efficiencies that can be made.
efficiencies that can be made, and then looking at potentially what staffing needs. Sometimes it indicates that there's not enough staffing in some areas. Sometimes it determines that there's too much staffing in areas. So it's definitely something worthwhile doing in any organization, because you will always get something out of it.
Absolutely.
I'm certainly in favor of doing the request for a proposal, see what we get and what type of costs we're looking at, and what scope of work we'd get for that cost.
Yeah, I'm agreed. I also think that it would not hurt to form the committee and look at what the committee finds or reports back to us. I'm not quite ready to, you know, hire any company at this point or something to come in and do this, but if we form a committee of a diverse committee and look at what we have, and then, before we make that decision. Are you going to want a motion to do this, or just a consensus?
I need a motion to be able to move forward.
I'd make a motion to issue the RF, request for proposal for organizational assessment of Franklin County operations.
I second it.
Have a motion and a second, Janet.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay. Takes us to staff reports. John?
None at this time.
I, just an FYI, and to Janet as much as anyone, I would like to put about fifteen-minute executive session on today after board reports, provided the board does object.
What reason?
I'd be attorney-client privileged, including myself and-
Okay. Sheriff, or do you have anything else to add?
That's all I have.
Sheriff, who else did I got back here? Jim?
Talked to the striping contractor. He anticipates he'll be in the week after Labor Day if his truck got repaired. If his truck didn't get repaired, he was supposed to get back to me. I haven't heard from him. My expectation is after Labor Day.
Okay, with that, it takes us to commissioner comments and board reports.
Never been to any, please.
The Hartland Works board meeting that was supposed to happen next week on the fifth of September, I got notification yesterday that that one has been postponed or actually canceled for the month of September, so there won't be a board report for them this coming month.
No. Nothing to add?
Yeah, also have not been to anything since the last commission meeting. So with that, I would look for a motion to enter to executive session for fifteen minutes, enough? Fifteen minutes?
Rick, can we take just a couple minutes to go get the key?
She needs to.
I just realized it's not in my bag.
Okay. About how long?
Like three minutes for me.
Okay.
Nine twenty-five.
I know where it's at. It's just not in my bag.
Would look for a motion, enter into fifteen-minute executive session, attorney-client privilege, be counselor, the administrator, and the commission, and we will look at going in at nine thirty. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I was the second.
Oh, who was the one?
Steve. So we'll take a quick recess to nine thirty, and then we'll go to executive session. Okay, we returned from executive session at nine forty-five. No action taken. No decisions made. With that, would look for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion, second, have a second.
Third.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned.